Today, October 31st, 2022. Happy Halloween, everybody. Quarter hour, 2:00 PM, having arrived, we'll begin salary board. The rule call of members present please.
Commissioner Eichelberger, Commissioner Fashi.
I'm here.
Commissioner De Filippo.
Present.
Controller Whitcomb.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to segment of public comment for issues regarding salary. Okay, that brings us to item four. We have the minutes in hand of the meeting of October 17th of this year. This require action.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 17th.
I'll second.
All right, move and seconded in favor and to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Just to item five, any additional business for salary?
No.
Good. I'm going to take a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We'll move into the Board of Commissioners meeting, opening with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a rule call members present.
Commissioner Michael Berger.
Present.
Commissioner Fashi.
I'm here.
Commissioner De Filippo.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us to item three, which is our segment of public comment. Al's ready for a turn.
Yes, Commissioners, thank you. I was here Thursday. And I heard that after I left, there were a lot of statements that made. Video online, and there were four specific statements. You know, that I would like you to address all made by Commissioner Michael Berger. The first two, I would just like to offer a comment. Quote, if he doesn't want his mother and his wife brought into it, he should keep them out of this email. I have all the emails right here. And I just want to point out that neither my brother nor myself was on any of the email threads of my wife. Neither my wife or my brother was on any of the email threads that I was on. And neither my wife nor myself was on any of the email threads that my brother was on. So that's just confirmation. They're all right here if anybody wants to see. Second quote, my goal was to find out what kind of meddling this guy was doing with people. And the reference was in relation to the Claremont sale proceeds. I'd like to point out that there were no communications in any of these emails to any county staff. Anything that I had to say about Claremont was either at a public meeting or in communications with elected officials, not county staff. The second two statements are the third and fourth statement where I am a court key purveyor. Some key disinformation that surrounds the best attorney of Claremont. And the last statement is the fact that Mr. Ravino recently cost this county a great deal of money by what a lot of people consider perjuring himself on a deposition in regard to the case regarding former admissions. Obviously, those are pretty strong statements. I'm not here to just, you know, to challenge anything, but I did want to give because those statements were made by one Commissioner. I wanted to give other Commissioners the opportunity to share with me whether they support those statements or agree with those statements or not. That's the purpose for my appearance before you. So if any of you want to share.
I understand my. You can be given half truth explanations, but frankly, I'm not interested in perpetuating this and wasting Board Commissioners' time.
And you're entitled to your opinions.
Well, I would say the media, since you turned over your emails to them, are also entitled to see all of the emails, not just the ones you chose not to read.
All my emails, I will be on your oath if you want me to with this. I turned over all of my emails and all of my wife's emails. I did not turn over my brother's emails. Those were the only ones that the media did not get. My wife is deceased. My brother, I feel, as I said, has a right to privacy. He's a private citizen. He's an unpublic official, and he has a right to privacy. So I chose to give them to Charlie. However, I did show the top of them to Charlie so he could see each one that it was back and forth between the Clerk of Court's office and my brother. But I didn't show the whole email. But I turned over every single email that was from or to or on which I was counted. And my wife's, every single one.
Again, fully addressing the questions that were raised at the time, but I stand by these.
Thank you.
At this point, thank you.
Rick, I'm just going to tell you this. This last question, this last statement here, the fact that Mr. Ravino also recently cost this county a great deal of money by what a lot of people consider perjuring himself on a deposition in regard to a case regarding a former administrator. You've asked if I have an opinion on that in this meeting. And you know, we're at a personal level. I do not believe that you have propensity for perjury. Now, let's talk about being a county commissioner, sitting in this seat where I protect people of this county, and I protect the taxpayers of this county. And officially, that is my position on that statement, is my job to protect the taxpayers of this county. Don't like where this is going.
Keith, I have a question. And correct me if I'm wrong, if I missed my case or anything, but there was litigation filed by the nursing home administrator at that time, Karen Woody. There was a complaint file. My understanding is this did not go to court. It was settled out of court.
That's, that's correct.
And that was done, I think, sometime about four years ago.
Twenty, I think this claim was made in 2016 and settled in 2018.
Now, when a person receives a deposition, what does it mean?
They have testified under oath in a form where the attorneys in the case can question witnesses. It's part of what they call discovery.
And if that case is settled, when would there be any idea to address and accuse someone of perjury? Would that not be done prior to settlement? I don't know. Can it happen before or after?
Could happen before or after.
And how would that even be proven?
I honestly don't know. I just don't know. I mean, we've all heard about perjury. I can't even tell you who prosecutes perjury. It's a district attorney.
Yeah, I, I really don't know what to say about that, about this. Wasn't involved with all of this, but to me, you know, perjury is a pretty serious thing, and I also want to separate myself that I am in no way involved with this statement, be it true or false. I am not accusing anyone of perjury at this time. Thank you for clarification.
Okay, anybody else? What pressures are on?
Public comments.
Yes, ma'am. And we just asked you to identify yourself, maybe you have an affiliation or a municipal.
Sure, sure. This is the first time I've been in front of the Board of Commissioners, so I'm gonna.
Don't worry.
Anyway, my name is Christine Muster, and I reside in Silver Spring Township. On the agenda, I'm going to speak about Agenda Number 12. I would like to share my concerns for the reappointing of Phyllis Nye to the Farmland Preservation Board. By profession, I am a historic preservation consultant. That is how I became involved with the Nye Farm that is located next to the Peoples Homestead. As a consultant for the preservation of the Peoples Farm, I attended the public meeting, the public hearing for the rezoning of the Nye Farm from agriculture to commercial in August. The hearing had to take place at a community center because of a large opposition to the rezoning. Many residents were at the hearing and spoke, many residents from South Hampton Township were at the hearing and spoke against the rezoning and the plan for Mr. Nye to allow warehouses to be built on the land. My understanding, the role of the Farmland Preservation Board is to protect preserved farms. I want to add, I'm also a farmer's daughter and daughter-in-law. The role of the pres, my understanding is the role of the Farmland Preservation Board is to protect and preserve farmland. Even though Phyllis Nye does not own the farmland, her husband does. The Nyes have received several prestigious awards, but as far as I know, none of them had to do with farmland preservation or historic preservation. Her husband has at least tried twice to have the farmland rezoned. Both times, Southampton Rezoning Board has denied the rezoning. To reappoint Mrs. Nye to the board would compromise everything the board stands for. The Peoples Farm, which I am involved with, again, because of preservation. A disregarded risk of property. By, oh, the property was designated at-risk by Preservation PA, a statewide nonprofit that works closely with the state Historic Preservation Office and the National Trust of Historic Places. One of the reasons it was added to the at-risk list is because of the vast development of farmland in Cumberland County, especially warehouses. Commissioner De Filippo, you have worked hard to preserve farmland. In Silver Spring Township, you spearheaded the organization of the Land Preservation Board, which is still now in practice today. That is your legacy. Farmland preservation is your legacy. And now to vote to reappoint someone who is a part of a plan to rezon farmland goes against all that you have worked hard for. Mrs. Phyllis Nye will also reap the benefits, even though she's not a landowner. She, if the rezoning goes through, she would reap the benefits of that rezoning. The question is, will Phyllis Nye's husband, knowing his wife is part of the Farmland Preservation Board, once again attempt to change the rezoning from ag to commercial so he can build more warehouses in the western part of the county where warehouses have already destroyed beautiful farmland? I ask you, the Cumberland County Commissioners, to vote against Mrs. Phyllis Nye's appointment for the same reason Preservation PA recognized the Peoples Farmstead at-risk. The threat of losing more farmland to warehouses. Thank you.
That, we get to that place. Do you have time?
Oh, yeah. I have two hours.
We'll be there.
Okay, do we have an additional public comment? Sorry, anyone online? Okay, then I'll move us on to item four. We have the minutes of our meeting, so October 13th, October 17th, in hand. Does require action.
Move to approve the minutes of October 13th and 17th, 2022.
I second that motion.
Okay, move and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five is the personnel transactions. Have been reviewed, documentation in our course. This require action if we are ready for them.
I will move to approve the personnel transactions.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item six. We have discussion and approval. We're laying the 2023 budget on view. The track of finance was today. Describe the process.
So we're requesting that you place the 2022 budget on view. It's a total expenditure budget of $337,750,000, of which it includes the general fund budget of $135,990. There is no change to the millage rate in the budget, and the budget is funded with about 30% of federal and state grants and 20% real estate tax. And I'd like to thank Tammy and Carrie and Brandon for all their hard work and pulling it together. And it takes all the departments in the county, a lot of hard work and dedication and working with us and getting it done.
Consider what amount of work we do appreciate that we put into that. I appreciate the feedback you give me in response to my questions. The only question I would ask on, for benefit, anyone may be viewing is, can you speak to the, any potential skewing of the numbers due to the amount of information or, I'm sorry, the amount of finances, financial support that we received this year, specifically regarding COVID and COVID-related rescue and all of that? Are those things segregated or are they in any way creating a less than clear picture to somebody who might read that?
So until decisions are made, we have, when we did the FAC, we clearly defined what we had in that was related to the different funding sources and what was not.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, other questions regarding the document? All right, very good. So we should have a motion for the laying of the budget on view.
Make a motion to lay the 2023 budget on view.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. If there's no further questions, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven is the regular approvals regarding grants and contracts. Once again, they're segmented into Roman numeral one, two, first being existing contracts, contract extensions, second being all new contracts. And we will need motion on.
I will move to approve the contracts and grants set forth on the agenda as number seven, Roman numeral one, A through D, and Roman numeral two, A through E.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions? Not, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Very opposed on motion carries. All right, we was just on to item eight, facilities management bid results for janitorial.
Hello, everyone. We did receive bids for janitorial services for five of our building locations here in downtown. We had three bidders. These bidders were DSC Solutions LLC, Interstate Building Maintenance Company, and GMW Construction LLC. Each bidder did bid on all five of the properties. And I'll redo the bids. This is per day cleaning prices. For the DRO building, DSC Solutions, $54.50. Interstate is $96. And GMW Construction did $1,795.75. Historic jail, DSC, $19.98. Interstate at $59 and GMW at $528.26. Dennis Marion Building, DSC, did $132.76. Interstate was $291 and GMW Construction, $4,664.40. The main courthouse, DSC Solutions, $298.08. Interstate was $477 and GMW Construction, $8,650.51. Lastly, Business Central, DSC was $29.57. Interstate at $59 and GMW at $71.92. Any questions?
Pretty sizable difference between the bids.
Very sizable, yes.
We're confident that everybody understood that they were bidding on.
It is. It's very clear. I knew you would ask a question. The highlight of this, it says per day.
All right. Thank you. You're anticipating my questions. Okay, so we have the presentation of those bid results as the expectation to take action today.
No, that'll be your next.
Oh, the next one. All right, very good. Excellent. Okay, if there's nothing further on that, that'll move us on to item nine. We have the Middlesex Township plans, grants, or grant program. We have recommendations for that.
I'll move to approve the Middlesex Township's Cumberland Plans, Grant, Application, and Award Recommendation as provided by the Planning Department for $19,677.
I second.
Okay, it's been seconded. There's no further questions. All in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item 12, we have also a Cumberland Plans Grant this time for Wormlessburg Borough.
It's item 10.
Yes.
Approval of Wormlessburg Borough's Cumberland Plans Grant Application. I move to approve that. So I moved to approve Wormlessburg Borough's Cumberland Plans Grant Application and Award Recommendation by the Planning Department of $22,600.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. For the questions, all in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 11 is the approval for the Department of Public Safety regarding various donations.
Should these be separate, Keith, or can we put them together?
You can do them together.
All right, I'll do that. I'll make a motion that we approve the request from the Department of Public Safety to receive the following donations to sponsor the 2022 Cumberland County LIPC Summit. That would be for Cargill Meat Solutions Corp. in the amount of $250. And first net, built by AT&amp;T, the amount of $275.
I second that motion.
It's been seconded. If there's any questions, all in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to item 12, the aforementioned Agricultural Land Preservation Board.
At our workshop, we had had a couple people come in and we had received some emails about one of the reappointments here on the recommendation that our Ag Board has presented to us, Phyllis Nye. I made the Chairman of the Ag Board aware of these comments, all of which were very civil, courteous. And I asked her, at her discretion, to please circle back around the Ag Board members to see how they feel about proceeding, so on and so forth. I spoke to the Ag Board Chairman last evening by Stavy. She advised me that she had contacted the majority of the Ag Board members that they all are fine with keeping the reappointments as is. Want to make it clear, Board members from the Agricultural Board have limited authority. They do not, and do not get involved in any land use plans. They do not get involved in any rezoning requests. This issue, in my opinion, and I think many opinions, is an issue between the landowner and Southampton Township. Townships are the ones who agree or not agree to a rezon request. In this case, Southampton voted no. I asked our solicitor, is there a conflict of interest here? He's, I believe your answer was, there is not.
Correct.
I understand completely why people are protesting or providing the opinion that this looks bad. There is nothing any one particular member on that Ag Board could do that would affect what the Ag Board does as it relates to rezoning requests. Again, I can see from the outside looking in. This might look a little funny, but it's really not. We have representatives on the Ag Board. One is a developer. Phyllis is her background. She's a financial advisor. And for the time I have been on the, she has been on the board and I, the liaison, she has provided good comment on the Ag Board. So I would like to present all three of them for reappointment unless my colleagues want me to provide this in another way. But I have full confidence in the three people that the Ag Board has presented to us. So you're making, I will make a motion. And I felt, Chris, appreciate you here. Appreciate your comments.
I also understand compliments. I also understand compliments. Oh, okay.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint the following three individuals for a three-year term effective January 1, 2023, and expiring December 31, 2025. And that would be Phyllis Nye, William Piper, and Danny McCullough.
I'm going to second that motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any further comments?
I have, I have comments because I have put a lot of thought into this, and I listen to public comments. I have also listened to what the solicitor has said about how there is not a conflict of interest and have also considered that this is a person who already serves on the Ag Board. And, and here what Commissioner De Filippo is saying, when he says, you know, the Ag Board is in favor of the reappointment of this person. So I certainly understand what I have been advised in terms of appearance, and I appreciate it. But I know what my vote is today, but I want everyone to know that I have quite various serious thoughts into this.
Yeah, anything additional? Just off, I thanks on behalf of the Board for your making up to come in and share with us.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Okay, if there's some other questions, we'll call the vote. All in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that moves us to item 13. We have recommendations regarding the Commonwealth County Commission.
So I will move first for the reappointment of Stephanie Okanduski for a three-year term effective January 1, 2023, and expiring December 31, 2025.
Second.
Okay, it is moved and seconded. All in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then I will move for the appointment of Laurel Spagnolo for a three-year term effective immediately and expiring December 31, 2024.
Second.
It's been seconded. No further questions. All in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that moves us to item 14. We have general dispersment transfer authorizations as outlined on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the general dispersment transfer authorizations as noted in item 14A through F.
That's second.
I second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item 15, which is other business. Anything additional?
Yes, I have a couple of verifications I would like to receive. I may, on October 27th, during our Commissioners' workshop, meaning while there was discussion about the right-to-know requests involving Mr. Ravino, Gary, you made a comment about Commissioner Fashi and me, and that we quote, do this, do his bidding for him. Could you provide what that means? Because I don't know what you mean.
I mean, you both have a significant history political involvement, Mr. Ravino, and have maintained a great deal of contact with him on a number of issues. And And I was referring specifically, I think, to this issue in regards to the benevolence fund, which I have stated, my opinion is we should focus on first determining a need and then figuring out how we meet that. I don't personally feel that that's the approach that has been taken, and it does seem to me as if there's an over anxiousness to address that in one singular manner that was put forward predominantly and primarily by Mr. Rubino. And that the we probably have not given sufficient attention to stepping away from the original position proposing and determining, you know, what is a good way to proceed? That appears to me as if that is a an effort to mollify Mr. Rubino's concerns over the divestiture of the nursing home. I have raised, of course, the fact that York County has done a benevolence fund, is much smaller than what was requested here. And that is, I'm not sure you would define their record as being overtly successful. And that there are perhaps better uses for those dollars that we have an obligation, in my opinion, to explore. And it certainly seems from a surface level that we are potentially shortcutting a value to process. And perhaps that is simply because of the pressure that Mr. Rubino has brought to the board.
I don't think this board has yet haven't had a discussion on what to do regarding a benevolence fund. And I want to point that out.
That's not.
That I bid for no one. And this statement is outlined. I want to go to my second point of clarification. On October twenty-sixth, at our finance meeting, the majority of the board of commissioners voted yes to award another round of ARPA grants. You voted no to that motion, and it is certainly your right and privilege to vote however you see fit. That's not my issue. My issue pertains to a communication I had with a local elected official who you contacted soon after the award announcement indicating that you could not support a process carried out behind closed doors and used to buy votes. What does that mean?
That means precisely what it sounds like. I mean, I.
Tell me, because I sure don't know what it means.
Well, I've raised my, I've raised the concern since day one that.
Who's buying votes?
Well, a lot of folks have had discussions.
Who are those?
I'm gonna leave it at this for now because.
Because you're making generalities and they're very.
People fear retaliation. People fear retaliation.
From who? I mean, you're making generalities and wow, that's a hell of a statement.
Well, I'll be happy to write up a detailed explanation. But I laid out on day one exactly what.
I'd like to go back to what Commissioner De Filippo asked. Because about this buying of votes. I mean, how, how would such a thing happen?
How would such a thing happen?
But, but, but Commissioner, would you please re-estate your question? And I would appreciate an answer from the chair.
This conversation indicated that you said that you could not support a process carried out behind closed doors. Which I don't know what that means, and used to buy votes.
The process had, had the thumb of certain commissioners on it throughout the process. And one has to determine that there's a reason for that.
Are you, are you implying that I'm, I'm gonna say this. You're saying that Commissioner De Filippo and I somehow got employees to buy into this plan? And then somehow they're a part of some kind of paola on this? I mean, that, that's what the hell you're saying. It's, it's unbelievable. It's a generality, there's no proof. I'm, I'm gonna really need you to put.
Well, you really want to be careful about that because there's, you know, the, there are, for one thing, I will just go to the point that is the most honest one, which is the commissioners originally were not to have access to these applications and we're not, but we're supposed to keep arms length from this, okay? However, when we were inundated with calls for, from applicants, please, please come to our, our function. We want to give you a dog and pony show, you know, walk you through this. We're gonna, maybe we'll give you lunch. We're going to do, show you our PowerPoint presentation, et cetera. I counsel that we keep arms length as past application processes with integrity were practiced. The commissioners had no business getting involved that early with applications, as I had stated before.
Commissioner, I have never seen an application. Commissioner gives like, oh, have you ever seen?
Well, let me ask this. Let me ask this then. Okay, so prior to the.
But I would like Commissioner De Filippo to answer the question. Have you seen an ARPA application?
No.
Neither.
That's interesting because at both our meetings of the Greater Hager Association of Realtors, our municipal advisory board, and just most recently to this Township Supervisors Association. Both of you indicated that you were fully in support of very specific applications. And that in your words at municipal advisory board, they're all great. I want to give them all one. And that was over a month ago, I believe. So.
I think maybe you want to go back and go back. I love it when you just make stuff up. It's one of my favorite things that you do, and that's what you're doing now. And it's pathetic. And it is pathetic coming from a person who wanted to have the county back a private entity. Just back their, back their ESOP.
That is not true at all.
Back it.
That is absolutely not true. That's not true.
On that.
That's not.
And you went to lobbyists and did that.
I didn't know something.
Amazing thing.
This is dirty. That is pure fiction. Pure fiction.
Gary.
Pure fiction.
Gary, you, Gary, this is another serious thing that you've done.
We asked.
Said you two are buying votes.
I am convinced it's exactly what's going on.
Have you really said that?
I believe that's exactly what's going on.
Did you really say that?
I have said.
Okay, who did you say that to? Because I'm not.
I don't know. There have been numerous people who've come to me and said, we do not understand how this application and this application, which look identical. One is awarded, one is not. We do not understand why this process. Well, the process we voted on is not the process that was followed.
Well, it absolutely was. It absolutely was. We've been talking about this process for a year and a quarter. We've talked about how we had the buckets of money. We've talked about how our subject matter experts looked at that. There's something else going on here, but only you can answer that question.
I, we started this quite a while ago. I said it was very clear, and I outlined to you how we would have a, a process that would be essentially defensible. Once people started coming in and saying, this is unfair, so it's inevitable.
You voted on the process.
I put it on an outline of the process. This process, as you know, or you should know, processes are steps. What goes in between those lines is as we go and as we go. I voiced my concerns about that throughout this process, usually in executive sessions, I will say. I think we have a real problem around here with some of these executive sessions that probably do not qualify as executive sessions, and our decisions made that probably should be brought to a public vote and not pushed in here so that they do not come to a public vote. I think the process was terribly managed. I believe the staff had a good idea, but I will tell you, there are numerous indications that and I will detail, I will, not now, but I will detail. There are a number of indications in. Please don't tell me that there weren't closed door meetings, because one time you left the door open and I heard the whole thing. So.
That's a generality. Then talk about it. You've got a public farmland to talk about what you left the door, but the door open was opened? And you heard something. Go ahead.
So I'm talking about the closed door meetings.
You just said the door was open.
One time, apparently. So I heard.
Go ahead.
Comparing notes on proposals that you now claim you never saw.
The dates, the time, the conversation. I mean, if you're at the door listening.
I'm not at the door listening. Your, your voice carries down the hall.
Well, I can't, I.
I'm sitting in my chair.
Speak, but you are now speaking in generalities with no proof. And if you have proof, please bring it forward. You have the.
I'll be happy to write up a summary. I'll be happy to write a summary.
I'm certain you will write up a summary, and I would love to. Commissioner, you have anything else?
I really don't, but I would just like to say one general comment. Elected officials, all of us, most of us in this room are, we should be held to our standards. And we can't exhibit civility. Even if we agree or disagree, then we need to work on that. But, you know, Gary, you as chairman, you need to exhibit more civility and more leadership, in my opinion. And I think things would get.
I wasn't the one who turned this into screaming match last time because they don't understand the rules of decorum, saying when you hold the floor, you hold the floor.
Do you know what the Robert's Rules of Order say about what happens when the chair is out of order? And do you know that Robert's Rules of Order?
I was not out of order. I had, I had the floor. I was, I was speaking my mind.
Who has the floor right now? Robert's Rules of Order also say that when the chair wants to give an opinion, the gavel is passed to the vice chair so that the chair is controlled. But we don't do that here.
You know why? I, I'm not sure, because for one, I don't think we've adopted any formal process, but.
I, I believe we follow Robert's Rules of Order.
Sure did last time. So, and as far as the gavel. I don't know that I would feel personally that you would exercise responsibly. If you were, you were new to this. Well, look at you guys right now. I mean, here's what's happening. I mean, you're talking about civility. Civility is used as the excuse, the excuse to demand conformity, to demand conformity, all right? So I, I was not elected to be here as part of a team, as you say. I was here to, to represent the people who elected me, all right? And what I'm seeing here increasingly does not reflect what I told people I was going to do as commissioner. Frankly, it doesn't reflect what you told people you were gonna do as commissioner either. You, we don't expect anything more than what we have. So I, I am a I'm an advocate for certain things, and I'm not going to be silenced over those things. And I see things happening here that trouble me enormously. And, you know, we don't elect people to Congress and tell them, go to Washington, and by the way, don't fight, don't fight with that other party. They need to. We have, that's how we represent people. So disagreement's gonna continue to exist, and sometimes it ain't true.
There's nothing wrong with disagreeing on issues. I think that happens frequently. To me, disagreement on issues creates at times progress and better, better decisions. But there's a way to be civil about it. This board was a term ago. And that kind of slipped away the last couple of years. We need to get back to that civility.
That's a term ago, the last term? We had plenty of disagreements in the last term.
No, you're not, you didn't hear me, Gary. We had civility for that term. Yeah, we had disagree. Hell, we're all on the disagree times.
We're very.
You can have civility.
There are very specific reasons for the last term's success, vis a vis this one, but I don't think you're going to those now, that we are pretending that way.
Those are my comments. I guess other issues for other business.
Uh, kind of motion for a governor. Move to a juror.